Would you call the roll, please?
Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts. Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held June 1st, 2015. Item B, receive and approve the minutes of the special joint budget study session held May 26, 2015. Item C, accept a 17-foot roadway and utility easement for Moore Public Schools located in the southeast quarter of Section 28, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being on the north side of Southwest 34th Street and west of Santa Fe Avenue. Item D is consider approval of a correction of the plat for Royal Rock, Section 5, excuse me, 6, addition Block 2, being located north of 19th Street and east of Max Morgan Boulevard. Item E is approve a memorandum agreement for FY 2016 with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board and the US Geological Survey for string gauging. Item F is renew existing intergovernmental agreement for regional household hazardous waste collection and management with the City of Oklahoma City. Item G is approve renewal of an agreement with the Center for Employment Opportunities for FY 1516. Item H is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014-2015 in the amount of $4,855,392.53.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is approve a release of two 25-foot drainage easements located in the southwest quarter of Section 14, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of Southwest 4th Street and west of I-35, application by On-Q Marketing.
Mayor and Council, these two items, items number three and four, are companion items on your agenda. On-Q is requesting a closure and a release of several easements that will not be needed as they replat the property to accommodate the On-Q gas station. The easements are, one, a release of drainage easement, that is a private easement that was filed a separate record, and this can be simply just released by the city council. Then, the second easements are a vacation of utility easements, that are utility easements that are included on a plat of the electric addition, electric addition which was platted in the 1950s. And these easements don't really carry any utilities that are currently in use, they might have been in use at one time, and this vacation will have to go, once it's approved by city council, it will go to district court, so the utility companies and the neighbors will have a chance to comment on that. Staff has reviewed both of these requests, and we recommend approval of both. Again, the vacation, the easements, will be heard again at district court after you approve it tonight.
Is there any reason anybody would be against it?
No. There's no utilities currently in use in these portions of the easements that they're vacating, and once the plat for On-Q is filed at county, that will reestablish new utility easements for the new utilities that they're installing.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item four is approve the vacation of two 5-foot utility easements, one 15-foot easement, and one 7-and-a-half-foot utility easement in the electric condition, being north of Southwest 4th Street and west of I-35, application by On-Q Marketing Incorporated.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider awarding RFP number 1415-010, Police Law Enforcement Theme Design, Installation, Safety Surfacing, and Supply of Playground Equipment at Kiwanis Park to ACS Playground Adventures Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $115,000. This is from Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the existing playground at Kiwanis is approximately 10 years old. The theme for this playground, as we've done in the past, return the theme of playgrounds as we replace them as a police or law enforcement theme. The budget for this project's $115,000. We received four proposals. We used a selection committee made up of park board members. We did a little different with this one, we had some police officers help us that served on the committee and the park staff. The source of the funding for this playground is CBBG funds, and so the recommendation is that the RFP be awarded to ACS Playground Adventures, and we've used them just as background information on two other playgrounds here recently, Veterans, and Parmally, they've done a great job, the installs go great, and people really seem enjoying themselves. With that, will we have to take any questions?
Is this going to be a splash pad park?
No, no.
Somebody asked me that. I told them I didn't think so.
No, no, it's just to replace the existing playground.
Thank you.
Make a motion to move the RFP to ACS Playground Adventures, Inc.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? It'd be nice to have it finished. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider approval of new job descriptions and pay ranges for staffing at the station at Central Park.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is really sort of a housekeeping item, but in our last meetings that we had where we briefed you on Central Park and where we stood, there was a lot of jobs that you saw in the presentation, and this is the job descriptions for those. They'll be phased in over the next one to five months, just right before the center opens. These are all budgeted positions. Again, they'll all be hired in the next fiscal year. The hourly rates range from eight, almost $9 an hour, to just under $20 an hour. With that, I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? So, looking forward, it's looking good out there.
We are too, thank you, Mayor.
Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider ordinance number 78715, amending Part II, Chapter III, Moore Municipal Code by replacing Sections 11-306, 11-309, 11-310, 11-311, amending and establishing the dates for removal of wreaths and decorations, providing for renumbering, providing for severability, and providing for a repealer.
Mayor and Council, items number seven and eight are companion items, both related to the cemetery, and item number seven is basically a housekeeping measure. What we're doing is condensing the rules, we have too many. And, so what we would propose is, previously we did four sweeps through the cemetery, we're proposing two sweeps, that's where we just go through and police and pick up everything that is faded and needs thrown away. And then the only flowers, the only decorations we're proposing to allow is they be placed in the vases or saddles that fit on top of the monument. It's amazing how times have changed and decorations vary, and it impedes our mowing and slows us down. And then we also allow flags on Memorial Day and Independence Day and Veterans Day. And we'll do new signage, and basically that will be the rules. Flowers will be the permitted decorations, and they'll be either located in vases as part of the monument or on a saddle, or certain times of the year they can be placed on the gravesite. And then, flags, three times a year. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Who's taking these calls?
Excuse me?
Who's going to take these calls?
We're taking them already.
Sounds like these are in line with other cemeteries.
They are. We checked with all of our neighboring cemeteries, and, like I said earlier, it's amazing what shows up on grave sites. And, we have to maintain that cemetery, and that's a chore in itself, and this is what's commonly seen on cemetery grave sites, and we didn't want to, we allowed the veterans to have their time to place, they always place flags on the veterans' graves on Memorial Day and Veterans Day, and then the Independence Day. So, we haven't excluded any of that, we just feel like we can do a better job maintaining the cemetery, and it'll be more presentable at all times.
Make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Thank you both. They've done a really good job maintaining that cemetery over the water and everything else we've done, so whoever does that, good job. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider resolution number 81315, adopting the schedule of fees and charges related to cemetery lots effective upon approval and remaining in effect until modified, amended, or repealed, and repealing prior inconsistent fees.
Mayor and Council, it's been several years since we've had a price increase on our lots at the cemetery, and what we're proposing today, an individual lot is $1,000, we would propose raising that to $1,200, and we have checked with the other cemeteries, and we're still lower than any of the neighboring cemeteries. And in the last several years, we've had a lot of requests for two bodies to be located on one gravesite, and what we're proposing, we've never addressed this issue, it's been handled on a case-by-case basis, and that's not a good policy. So, what we're proposing is, you can either, in one lot, you can purchase one lot, and you can either have two cremations, or one burial and one cremation, and that fee is $1,800. That is a new fee, however, we're getting more and more of these type of requests. And the third is the cremation lot, we would propose raising that from $500 to $600.
Just curious, I haven't looked into it yet, maybe I should, but, how much does it cost a cemetery that's not approved by the city, buy a lot there?
I don't have those numbers marked, but in some cases it's double, and it's significantly more money. Now, that's with the cemeteries surrounding us. If you look at another municipal cemetery, it's, we're closer to those fees. But we always look at Rest Haven, and the one out off Indian Hill Road, east of town, Sunset.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider approval of a contract for engineering services with Traffic Engineering Consultants in the amount of $35,450 for the design of a street widening and signalization project at Telephone Road and Southwest 17th Street.
Mayor, items nine and 10 are similar, both of them are engineering contracts with TBC, or Traffic Engineering Consultants, on roadway and intersection project improvements. Number nine there is the proposed signalization and intersection widening at Southwest 17th Street. That will be in conjunction with the eventual connection of Southwest 17th back around to 19th Street through the commercial development over there, and the HUDDR funds will be able to pay for this construction project. The other project is a, and item number 10 is a widening project that had a center turn lane all the way from Max, on 19th Street, all the way from Max Morgan Boulevard over to Eagle Drive. This was a project that was anticipated in the MITA borrowing that we did back last year.
Not able to use HUD money for those improvements?
The first one, 17th and Telephone, we will use HUD money for that. The other project, perhaps would be eligible, but we can't, those funds had already been identified for that project prior to the awarding of the HUD funds, so we have to be real careful about, you can't use those funds to supplant other funds that were already pre-designated for a certain project. So, again, both of these projects are kind of in the overall scope of the work we've been doing down there and continuing to do in that area to try to handle the traffic in the area. You probably noticed that we repaved the overlay to Southwest 19th Street in the last couple weeks. We had hoped to be able to wait on that overlay project until we did this widening that's included here, but the pavement got so bad that we thought it was dangerous in some cases, so we went ahead and did the overlay. The widening will not disturb too much of the new pavement, but that will occur later on in the summertime.
They did a really good job on that, too.
It looks real good.
Right.
Hopefully, get it striped this week, and it's going to look really simple, yeah.
Is there a possibility that we do those, probably have to for a little while, but can they be done at night, or, or towards the evening, 7:00 AM to 3:00 or something?
The overlay paving project?
Yeah, it's not quite cause as much stress on the people, and I know we're rather quick, but it was, can we do them at night, or should we just talk along?
We certainly can talk to our contractor about doing them at night, I think it will be added costs, I don't know what that is, but, trying to think, what's our next overlay project? Probably Stan Telephone Road.
It's good for you.
Telephone Road between 4th and 19th, we're going to overlay that, that'll be a HUD project, so we can talk to them about it and just see what the cost differences are. It would be a little bit less imposing on the public, you're right.
And I don't, 19th Street is pretty commercial, not a lot of residential there, and you go on Telephone, there are some residential homes, so it'd be...
They may not like it at night, on Telephone Road, yeah.
...be an option.
Going back to item nine, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, if there's no other discussion, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is consider approval of a contract for the engineering services with Traffic Engineering Consultants Incorporated in the amount of $18,550 for the design of a street widening project on Southwest 19th between Max Morgan Boulevard and Eagle Drive.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number 11 is consider a budget supplement for MITA in the amount of $20,000, Park Improvements Fund in the amount of $4,200,000, Parks Geo Bond Fund in the amount of $3,500,000, and CBGDR Funds in the amount of $4 million.
Mayor and Council, this is a request for a budget supplement for these funds. It's strictly a paperwork or administrative move, it's not additional spending that wasn't planned for, and the funds are fully there, either in quarter cent sales tax funds, Geo Bond Funds, or HUDDR Funds. So, we request a supplement for these funds listed.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on these items? Have we got the $4 million from HUD?
No, no, we don't have that yet, but the reason we have to budget for it is we have projects that are fully encumbered, and we need to budget for them.
So, where's that money coming from?
Well, we will receive it, we'll draw it down once we expend it.
Okay.
But we haven't fully expended it yet, but we need to budget for it.
Okay. All right, with that said, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Thank you.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number 12 is a consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held June 1st, 2015. Item B, receive and approve the minutes of the special joint budget study session held May 26, 2015. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014-2015 in the amount of $731,420.97.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Everybody get their claims, questions answered, or any notes or changes to the minutes? If not, would you call for the vote?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number 13 is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held June 1st, 2015. Item B, receive and approve the minutes of the special joint budget study session held May 26, 2015. Item C, approve payment in the amount of $18,411 for final compromise settlement for the balance of a previously approved court order number WC 2014-05280Q to Kevin Goodnight. Item D, approve payment of the workers' compensation compromise settlement in the amount of $43,375 to Kevin Goodnight for claim number CBR-02205000210, authorized payment placed on the Advilone tax rolls and supplement the budget accordingly. Item E, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014-2015 in the amount of $163,406.51.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries.
Oh, Terry Kavner, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I answered for you, how it works.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting.
Before it continues, the roll calls, call roll, please.
Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
David Roberts.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
Item 15 is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held May 18, 2015. Item B, receive and approve the minutes of the special joint budget study session held May 26, 2015.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any question or comment? Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes, item passes. This time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council.
Okay, thank you. Item 16 is new business. Item A is item, citizens forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up, would anyone like to speak? You're the only one here. Okay.
I'm on the invitation, I think so.
Okay, thanks. All right, item B is, item from the city council or trustees?
Hey, I've got a couple of thoughts about the new parks, in reference to some of the issues that we've had, Palm Springs Park jumping off the bridge to the creek, and we're going to have some bridges at the new park that's being built, and I would anticipate we could have the same issues over there. Is the city thinking about maybe doing something a little different to make that not so easy? Or are we just going to continue signs and patrol?
We have several other bridges similar to that bridge, or exactly like that bridge around, in our different parks. And, to my knowledge, that's the only one that we've had any issues with over there. I'm not sure why it's more enticing than the others, but frankly, we hadn't thought about it until, because we haven't had a significant issue of them, a few over there. I don't, we haven't had that many, have we? Even at Parmally, it's happened a few times.
Okay.
It hasn't been a significant one.
And, Robert Steen, the Morris Park, what are we going to do with that old park equipment? I know that it would be, or do we have plans for it? The old park equipment that we're getting rid of? We're at Morris. Yeah. Mark, what we've done in the past is just going to prepare the site, the playground, the only time we've done something was at Madison Place, that playground donated to the Southwest, the Kavner Department Center, they had interest in it, so, if you've got a time to tear it out, it's not a big condition to really, definitely, it's... Okay, well, you may, I don't know, I know it's old to us, but I would be grateful, I'm sure some smaller community would love to have it, or some other organization. So, if anybody's listening and they're interested in it, just contact the town gents or the Parks Department, Mr. Edie.
Sure.
And maybe we can help with that. Thank you, that's all.
Okay. Item, okay, item C, anybody else? Item C is, item from the city manager or trust manager.
Just to mention a couple of things, Mayor. One is, you're probably aware that the Main Street Railroad Crossing was closed all weekend. They finally got that open back up this afternoon, or today. Just want to reiterate to folks out there that that wasn't us that closed that, and the railroad is responsible for their crossings and the maintenance of them. We do go in and assist them with the approach up to the crossing whenever they repair them, but in terms of how long it takes, when it happens, they control that, they let us know a day or two typically, if we're lucky, ahead of time that they're coming and that they're going to do it. So, that's just the fact of life with the railroad. Another comment has already come in about 12th Street Crossing, that's rough, we've made them aware of that, asked them to fix that, but it's just going to be whenever they schedule it. So, again, just trying to inform the public as to how that happens. The 34th Street Crossing is still closed, is going to be closed apparently for a few more days, we don't know for sure yet, because of some issues at the crossing that they're taking care of, so, a bit frustrating sometimes for us, and certainly for the motoring public and for our citizens, we're aware of that. for our citizens, we're aware of that. But, not much we can do about it at this point. Also, just wanna say that our, uh, police officers, uh, some of our, uh, police officers participated in a charity basketball game, uh,
Is it going?
Friday evening, and, uh,
I'll join you.
soundly defeated our friends to the south, uh, uh, to the, for the benefit of Moore